Hello, everyone, and welcome to the forum for Tucker City Council District One Post Two. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wisemont. We have two candidates with us today. The two candidates in the November seventh election are Virginia Reese, Virginia. Councilmember Reese, how are you this morning?
I'm well. How are you?
Cannot complain. And her challenger Karen Berry. Karen, how are you this morning?
Doing well. Thank you. How are you doing?
I cannot complain, other than there's, there's some weird pollen or something in the air. So I'm, so bear with us. So this forum is being recorded and we're gonna publish it on the Decaturish YouTube channel and the Facebook page. If you need to look for that, just type in Decaturish on YouTube, Decaturish Media, or on Facebook and you'll find that. Each candidate is gonna have two minutes to make their opening statement and a closing statement. And we're gonna give each candidate two minutes to answer each question, and I'll be keeping time for everybody. With that said, first, I do want people to mark their calendars. November seventh is the election. October sixteenth is when early voting starts, so keep that in mind. And with that, we're gonna start with our opening statements, and we'll start with Councilmember Reese. Councilmember, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Virginia Reese, and I'm honored to serve on the Tucker City Council for District One Post Two. I ran for a special election in 2021 to finish out my friend Bill Rosenfeld's term, who passed away unexpectedly. I have lived in Tucker for over twenty years. I am a wife, a mother to two children, and a small business owner. When we moved here, when my daughter was just under two, and now I have a twenty-two and eighteen-year-old, which is crazy to think of. I'm passionate about giving back to my community, and I jumped in in our community when my daughter was only three or four, because I really wanted to set an example to my children that community service, volunteerism is really important, and we should always lend a helping hand. When I ran in 2021, I ran on quality economic growth, community safety, the community input, and rebuilding infrastructure. In my short time in office, I hit the ground running. We built the first segment of our trail on Huha Road. We're installing sidewalks all over the district, street lighting for public safety. We're working on improving our parks, particularly Lord Park. We finalized our plan there, and we protected green space, walkability in the community while adding programming and educational elements. Peters Park, we've made repairs to the pavilion, added new benches and picnic tables, and currently working with DeKalb County Board Commissioner Robert Patrick to add bathrooms there. There's a lot more work to do, and that's why I'm really excited to be running for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Berry, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you. I'm Karen Berry. I've lived in Tucker for about seven years now. I have one daughter and a husband. My daughter is ten, and I have just get, I tend to get involved in pretty much everything. I've started up at the school. I have a real estate license. I, I sit around and I listen into what's going on, and it's like, I've always said, hey, if you want to get involved, you need to get involved. It's important to get involved. Tucker is wonderful, and Tucker is, like Virginia said, is growing and is doing great, and I would just like to encourage that growth and help make it as easy as possible for small business and to keep Tucker going forward in the way that we have been. So.
I'm a parent too. Fun fact, if you keep feeding them, they get bigger. I don't know if people know that.
More each time.
They need a warning label. On that, so moving on to our first question, and I want to start with a question about diversity, because when this election is over, Tucker is gonna have its first person of color sitting on the council, one of the races, all the candidates, candidates of color. So it's a historic moment for a young city. So starting with you, Karen, I wanted to ask, do you think diversity and inclusion are important in local government? And what will you do to promote diversity and inclusion if you are elected? Two minutes.
Yes, I do. I think that everyone should be included, and I think that diversity is one of the things that makes Tucker so incredible. We have a huge, we have a diverse population, but I also think that sometimes we need to focus more on what unites us rather than what divides us. And as we unify on the things that are important to us, our families, our friendships, our town, then we come together more to improve Tucker. I don't think that, I think we need to know each other on a one-on-one basis. I find that when you meet people, you learn to like people. I mean, people, people accept people once they get to know them, and they're your neighbors. I think we are told so many times to, let's point out their differences. No, let's, let's, let's point out our common ground and what, what we want to see Tucker grow as together.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese's question is to you. Do you think diversity and inclusion are important in local government, and what will you do to promote diversity and inclusion if you are reelected? Two minutes.
Thank you. The short answer is yes, without question. We all want to feel welcomed, included, and represented in our communities. And as you mentioned, I'm excited to see that in District Two, come January, we will make history, because we will have a person of color elected to Tucker City Council, and I think that's a wonderful thing. Tucker is a very diverse community, extremely diverse, and our diversity is, I believe, what makes us, is what defines us, is part of our strength and our beauty. I have always believed that we learn and grow from our differences in our different cultures and backgrounds. When I took office, one of the things I started saying almost immediately, because I wanted folks to know that everyone feels included with me, that's just kind of who I am. I want people to feel like they're welcomed, and I want people to feel represented. So I always say, every voice matters to me, and that is why I set out working all over our district, putting in sidewalks in areas that had not, you know, we had not gotten anything in there yet, bringing in safety measures, because I want everyone in Tucker to know, no matter where you come from, no matter what your background is, I am working for you, and you are represented.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Councilmember Reese, and for those keeping score at home, we try to alternate who starts each question. I just sort of keep that fair. So to Councilmember Reese, Tucker City Manager Tammy Hanlon recently announced her retirement. If you're reelected, you'll be responsible for hiring her replacement. What qualities are you looking for in a city manager? Two minutes.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I am very sad to see Tammy leave. I think Tammy has been a really wonderful city manager to help us, you know, build the framework, turn the lights on. She's done so much work to help us get where we are today. When I came on council, my personal experience with Tammy and staff was that they were there to help me and assist me and help me advance the priorities that the community had asked me to work on. She's been very, very supportive, and I feel like she's supportive of all of us on council, whatever our districts are asking us to work on, whatever the city as a whole we need to work on. So I just thank Tammy for her service. But this is an opportunity for us to grow and move forward. I like to say, we are, you know, we're seven years old, so we're in second grade, so we're growing up, you know, and we have this opportunity to look at the next phase for where we want to go in Tucker. I would like to see in our next city manager, someone that has a very deep background in municipal government, a lot of experience. I would like to see someone who is task-oriented and has followed through to help us stay on track, to realize the vision and the priorities that our citizens have asked us to work on. I want someone who has strong ethics and strong integrity, transparent transparency, and I want someone who's inspirational and a natural team leader.
Thank you. Karen Berry, the question is to you. If you were elected, one of your duties will be hiring the next city manager. What qualities are you looking for? Two minutes.
I disagree with Virginia. I mean, that sounds, I got to meet her, Tammy, the other night in class, and it sounds like that we had an excellent manager, and she, we're gonna have hard, it's gonna be hard to fill those shoes. Oh, what happened? But I do believe, you do, you have to have someone transparent. You have to have someone strong in those skills. You also have to have someone that is, she, they described her as Switzerland, that she can listen to the ideas, both of, and take into the vision and the ideas of the council and the mayor, as well as the citizens, and balance it and be the strong one to say, wait, this is actually reality as well. And so we have to be able to mix what we want and what we can afford and what we can do together, and someone that's able to do that and has the experience to show us how to do that.
Thank you. Next question, we're gonna start with Karen. Karen, the question is, the city of Tucker recently adopted a non-discrimination ordinance. What's your opinion of that ordinance, and what's your opinion of the process behind adopting it? Two minutes.
I was not there for this. I think that, that I think that this is more of a state and federal issue, and I appreciate what was behind it. I think it needs to be tweaked a little bit if we're gonna go there. But actually, I don't really think that this is a city issue.
Can I follow up on that? You say it's not a city issue, but I mean, it's a city ordinance.
It should, it, yes, it is now a city ordinance, so obviously, we will follow it.
Okay, Councilmember Reese, the question is to you. For the record, I believe you voted for the ordinance when it was adopted. What's your opinion of the ordinance, and what's your opinion of the process behind adopting it? Two minutes.
Yes, thank you. Well, I was on the committee with councilmembers Ann Lerner and Kara Schroeder that looked at and studied possible potential NDO. And we started out looking at the draft that the Tucker Open Door folks had put together. From there, we went on a year-and-a-half-long process to engage with the community, get feedback. And during that year-and-a-half, we talked with faith leaders, we talked with folks in the business community. We had lots of conversations on the street, in the grocery store. We reached out to multiple people to just hear from them, and every time, we looked at ten different, at least ten different ordinances from around the country. We put together a working group, I forgot to mention that, of folks that had, you know, brought their business expertise, their professional expertise, their personal experiences into the conversation. And we also engaged with our fellow councilmembers. We went through a long year-and-a-half process to really listen to the community, hear from the community, and every time we tweaked the NDO to reflect the wishes of the community. So I feel grateful and proud of the process that we went. I think it's an example of what we should do on council when we're looking at something. You take the public along with you. And I also am just really thankful to everyone that gave their input, insight, and my fellow councilmembers who worked on it with me.
Next question, we will start with Councilmember Reese. Councilmember Reese, candidates running for Tucker City Council work in various professions and fields. What skills do you use in your regular job that you think are useful to your role as a Tucker City Council member? Two minutes.
Well, I, my background is in the hospitality industry and in the entertainment and special event industry. And I believe that those two particular industries give, are, give me unique qualities to be ineffective and responsive elected official. One of the things that I have to do in my current job in the special events industry, I'm a singer by training, run a band, but I do a lot of event planning, and so I have to be collaborative, have to be solution-oriented, I have to be responsive. You know, in the hospitality industry and in this industry, you have to be customer service-oriented. And so, as you know, we're, you know, a lot of times we're putting out fires for folks in the community, not literally, obviously, but we're problem-solving, we're trying to find solutions for everyday issues for our neighbors, folks in the community. So I think that those, that long background, particularly, I worked at Ritz-Carlton, which was, I always say, changed my life in a lot of ways, way back when, really taught me a high level of service, patience, collaboration, and working with the community.
Thank you. Karen, the question is to you. The candidates all have very diverse backgrounds and professional expertise. What are some skills that you use in your regular job that you think will be beneficial to you if you are elected? You have two minutes.
Well, negotiation with real estate, there's always something different. Negotiating, trying to figure out what works for best, because you're dealing with, you know, buyers and sellers, and each has a goal. So I'm working with, a lot of empathy when you do, I do subbing, and prior to staying at home, I was, I worked with the state doing juvenile probation. You learn leadership, you learn to listen, you try to meet the needs of families that were, you know, oftentimes in crisis. You have to, you have to take the skills that you're presented with and learn to work with, with people and work with in their situations. I try to, if there is a problem that presents, I try to have a solution. You know, I like people. I like learning about people. I like pleasing people, you know, hearing what they have to say and working with others to achieve those goals together.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next question is going to be, start with Karen. Karen, one of the unique things about Tucker is term limits. Do you agree with the city having term limits? And if elected, would you ask the legislature to change the charter to end term limits? You have two minutes.
This will be easy. Yes and no. Absolutely. I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay.
On their toes. Excuse me. Yes.
Councilmember Reese, same question to you. Do you agree with Tucker having term limits? And would you ask the legislature to remove term limits? Two minutes.
Yes, thank you. Generally, I do support term limits, for sure. I, I think it's a great opportunity for folks to jump in and get involved in the democratic process. So it gives us an opportunity to, you know, have folks, you know, step up. So I think that's a great thing. I also think that experience is valuable as well. One of the things that I've learned in my two years in office, I've taken a lot of classes. There's a ton of reading. There's every day I'm working to learn and continue how to be a better representative for my community. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and I think that there is value in experience. So while, so I think there's a balance there, right? I think that term limits are really important, and I also think that, you know, it's important for folks to, to know that, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into this. Experience is really important. However, I have no intention of, you know, if, whether I thought we might want to extend term limits or remove them, I have no intention of going to legislator. I'm very busy working for the community, working to fulfill the priorities that the citizens have asked me to work on, so my attentions are elsewhere.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with Councilmember Reese. Councilmember Reese, what are your ideas to improve pedestrian safety in Tucker? You have two minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, this is something that I've been working on from the very first day I took office, working to improve pedestrian safety. I touched on that in my opening statement. So we have built our first segment of our trail along Huha Road, and we're currently working on the next segment, and hopefully that will begin next spring. That promotes, that provides an opportunity for folks to walk and bike and get out. It's also, you know, a wonderful thing for mental health, so there's a lot, you know, it's quality of life, et cetera. We also have built sidewalks along Juliet Road, as I mentioned, that connects, this is in the southern portion of District One, that connects pedestrians up to the Stone Mountain Trail. So those folks were walking in the, in the grass to get up there. I think there were some broken sidewalks in there, but now they have a nice sidewalk with street lighting for pedestrian safety. We are also, we have plans we're working on right now to build sidewalks along East Ponce de Leon from Orchard Park Community down to Idlewood. That'll be a very big project. Engineering is working on that right now to provide safety for those that are walking to their MARTA bus stops or to school. One of the things that folks told me out in the community is that some, some of their kids are walking up to bus stops, and, you know, they're at least having to cross the street or walk along the grass, so we're getting sidewalks in there for them. I also support barriers wherever possible between pedestrians and, you know, cyclists and vehicles. Studies show that if someone is hit at forty-five miles per hour, which we know that a lot of people go faster than that, that they will be seriously injured or it will be a fatality. So I will continue working on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Karen Berry, question to you. What are your ideas to improve pedestrian safety in Tucker? You have two minutes.
Well, to continue with the Tucker tomorrow, to establish and continue with the sidewalks. And once we get the sidewalks, keep them clean and debris-free with lighting. There are possibly cameras so that everybody can feel safe walking on them, biking on them, because it does open up a huge amount. To build a walkable city is a wonderful thing. I love to be outside. And if, knowing that I can walk down Huha without getting ran over, or even Lawrenceville Highway is working on, we're trying to, they're trying to work out how the pedestrians can work that way. And it's a very busy intersections near Main Street. There's so many different intersections, but to keep the, the progress going with the sidewalks and the accessibility sidewalks and keeping them fresh and open and debris-free and lighting and absolutely continue to support that.
Thank you. Karen Berry, we will start the next question with you. If you are elected, what will you do to engage with your constituents and keep them in the loop about your decision-making process? You have two minutes.
I'll keep up in my Facebook page. I'll be out in the community, make my phone number, make my email, make everything accessible, make myself accessible. I don't, I love walking around, meeting people, talking to people, and listening to them and seeing what ideas they are, and, you know, take them to my fellow council, and say, hey, this is what the people want, what if we can get it done?
Thank you. Councilmember Reese, same question. If you are reelected, what will you do to engage your constituents and keep them in the loop about your decision-making process? You have two minutes.
I have a newsletter that I publish every two or three months, and I'm very involved on social media. We try to do at least two or three posts a week, just keeping people up to date on what's happening in the community. I try to make it multi varied, you know, with, you know, highlight things that are happening in the community or the work I'm doing. Always out in the community, talking with folks. And when I'm out, I actually always ask people, if we're at a public meeting, public input meeting afterwards, I linger around and ask folks, what do you think? Try to get, you know, more context with them from things that were said in the public meeting, you know, whether we're down at the, you know, our current town green, watching a concert, I'm walking around checking on people and asking them what they think, how things are going. I'm always engaging with the community to hear from them. I think it's really, really important. We also have done a few events. I have done cocktails with council in the past, and we're working on doing a town hall later this year, and also maybe a cookout with council. I'd like to do that as well, just to kind of keep the conversation going and let people know that I'm here accessible. And I always say to people, you know, you can call me anytime. I publish my number and encourage people. Anytime, call or text, I'm here to help you work on solutions and, and hear from what you'd like to see in the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese, we will start this question with you. Do you think the city is being fair with how it spends money on parks and recreation? And if not, what will you do to ensure that city resources spent on public parks and recreation facilities are spent fairly to address the needs of all Tucker residents? Two minutes.
Short answer is yes, I do, and here's why. With every plan that we do, we have a public engagement process. We have, you know, almost always, we have, you know, two public hearing meetings where folks can give us feedback. We present plans to give feedback. Certainly, we have our council meetings, and when we have our regular council meetings, we have opportunities for people to give, folks to give us feedback, as I talked about earlier. I want to hear from folks about what's going on. However, I suspect you might be referencing the project in Henderson Park and perhaps Fitzgerald, which are two really, really big projects that's happening right now. So those are very, very big projects that are important for our city. The dam at Henderson Park, the two dams there are in very bad shape, and we really have to do something. They've been on the federal government's radar for several years now, so I think that is an important project that needs to happen. And, you know, certainly with Fitzgerald, another project that is a high-dollar project will add value and quality economic growth to our community, because it will be a state-of-the-art sports center. Those projects are not in my district, but we are also, while we're working on those big projects, we're adding programming to Lord Park. We're, you know, we are protecting the green space and adding program there. We're working on Peters Park. We continue to work on that, to, you know, working on adding bathrooms there, made big improvements there. Rosenfeld is getting a state-of-the-art tennis courts. The, the tennis courts were failing, so we're working all over the city, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Karen, Karen Berry, same question to you. Do you think the city was, is being fair with how it spends money on parks and recreation facilities? If not, what will you do to ensure that city resources spent on public parks and recreation facilities are spent fairly to address the needs of all Tucker residents? Two minutes.
As far, as of right now, it appears that we are being fair. I think we need to keep communication open and continue to make sure that it is being fair, but each district in each thing has, it's a little bit different. Park. And frankly, I'm learning more and more about this. So the short answer is yes, and I will continue to learn about that.
Thank you. Karen Berry, we'll start this question with you. What steps can the city of Tucker take to reduce its carbon footprint? Two minutes.
I'm gonna completely research that one. That one you, I have not even thought about, so I apologize.
No worries. Councilmember Reese, question to you. What steps can Tucker take to reduce its carbon footprint?
I've been working on this issue already. I've been working on this issue already, uh, for a while. When we went through our town green master plan, uh, our, uh, process. One of the things I advocated for is to get EV stations um, at the town green and I will continue to advocate for that. I believe that, um, I think we'll be able to get two there, but we'll have to see as we, we go along. So that's something that, um, that I'm, I'm proud of. Um, certainly protecting our green space. Uh, that's one of the things that I worked really hard on Lord Park. Uh, Lord Park is a city park and it's part of um, our, uh, you know, our future plan to build there, but we are protecting the trees. Um, we went through the process with the community and that's one thing that, uh, I made sure of is that we're protecting our trees. Um, and walkability in that community. Um, I also would like to pursue in my next term, a bus rapid transit hub at, uh, Mountain Industrial and Seventy-Eight. That's something that's been talked about in the past. That's a big project, but I'd really like to e- explore that and pursue that in my next term. Uh, and also perhaps have a shuttle, um, you know, stationed there as well. Uh, because, you know, in our district, we have a very large swath of industrial and ninety-six percent of, um, of, uh, folks that come in are coming to work here. So to be able to have some other kind of mass transit options, even though we are built out and we cannot, we cannot build a MARTA rail here. Um, there's not really any viability for that, but to find some other solutions to have less vehicles on the road. And then lastly sidewalks, sidewalk sidewalks and trails. This gives folks an opportunity to, instead of having to get in their car and drive one minute, you know, down to the grocery store. Um, they can ride their bike and, um, or go to a restaurant. So.
Thank you. Uh, next question, we'll start with you if you want to, if you want to pick up on any of that in the next question. Um, Councilmember Reese, do you agree with Tucker's policy of outsourcing many of its services to private contractors? Or do you think the city should work to turn more of this work over to people employed by the city? Two minutes.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I do. I think that, um, I'm a big believer in balance. And, um, I think that the way that the city has pursued that has been fiscally responsible. It has allowed us to engage with experts in the field while we're learning and growing as a city. So I, I do believe that we have followed the correct path. And as we have, you know, as I said, kind of grown up, we've added employees to the city. But like when we went through the public works, uh, in stormwater process, um, we, you know, we looked at different levels of whether, you know, we wanted to take over public works as a city. Uh, whether we wanted to, you know, have a partial, uh, work with subcontractor, subcontractors, partial employees. And we chose a route that I think is very effective because we get the expertise, but we're not investing millions of dollars into uh, equipment and buildings and land. So this is a very responsible way to, in order to perfect, keep us professional and working for the community, but at the same time, um, you know, we're, we're getting the job done and slowly as we grow, we'll probably add more employees from time to time in the right time that we need to.
Thank you. Uh, Karen Berry, the same question to you. Do you agree with the city of Tucker's policy of outsourcing many of its services to private contractors? Or do you think the city should work to turn more of this work over to people employed by the city? Two minutes.
I think that we get the best, um, for the, 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 the most bang for the buck. So I think it's a great combination. We're learning and we're bringing in qualified people, but until then we're subcontracting or outsourcing. Um, I think it's a wonderful balance. Um, and I would agree with the way that that is being done. And until, um, it could show that we, you, you know, we're taking baby steps. We are brand new. I mean, seven years old is not very old at all as far as a city. So, um, you know, as, um, so I, I like, I like the balance. I think that there's a good balance and I think it's a good way to do things. Yes.
Thank you. I gotta ask as, as a rule, I've, I've, I've heard Tucker's brand new for seven years now. At what point does Tucker not brand new? Is it, is it ten? Is it twenty? I just, I, I want to know where that metric is, uh, if, if, if anybody has any thoughts on that.
Well, maybe when we hit middle school.
Maybe when Tucker is sixteen and old enough to drive. Um, I, I could get behind that or eighteen and old enough to vote. Uh, all right, uh, ne- in all seriousness, next question, we're going to start with, uh, Karen Berry. Uh, Karen, if you are elected, how will you work with your colleagues to manage Tucker's growth as a city while preserving its character? Two minutes.
Um, I think from what I'm learning, um, it's important to build relationships, not only with the community to keep what, obviously they, they put us there, uh, they, they want us there, you know? So it, you need to listen to what they have to say and what they want. And then we take it and we work closely. Um, you build relationships with the council and the seven and the, um, the seven people, um, and the council members and the manager to meet those needs. Um, and a lot of that just communication, talking, but, um, you know, working it out, um, hashing it out, figuring out the pros and cons and you know, sometimes you agree to disagree, but finding out what is best for Tucker, um, in, in, in listening and listening, but, uh, responding to what Tucker wants and making sure that it happens uh, responsibly and, um, together.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese, the question to you. Uh, if you were re-elected, what would you do to work with your colleagues to manage Tucker's growth as a city while preserving its character? Two minutes.
Well, certainly we have and we continue to do it in a thoughtful and responsible way. We have to take the public along as we do, um, you know, make sure that we are transparent and engaging with the community. Allowing our citizens to, um, to be engaged and, and, uh, give us input on what they'd like to see in the community. Um, and we have done that, um, so far. Um, I think in a really thoughtful and balanced way. One example obviously is the Lawrenceville Highway, uh, special district that we're looking at right now. You know, we have taken that to the community and every time we present it, we get feedback and we tweak it. Um, we have to grow. We have to understand that we do need to grow. We need housing, right? We ha- we need housing in so many different, um, uh, sectors. And so we've got to figure out ways to do that. I know that our citizens are really attached to the charm of Tucker and the small-town feel. So certainly we, we need to work to preserve that. But you know, how we do that is we work with our community development director and planning and zoning. And along the way, we make sure that we're very sensitive to, you know, growing with, um, with that small-town ideal in mind, that that's something that our citizens really continue want to see. We also have to understand that you know, we're landlocked. We don't have, you know, open, you know, uh, fields to build in. So we're going to have to repurpose things. And we're going to have to, uh, rebuild or, you know, uh, build in, uh, areas where we have to kind of be creative. And so, um, I think we're on the right track, but we just have to keep, continue working in that direction.
Thank you. I will start the next question with Councilmember Reese. Uh, Councilmember, how do you think the city of Tucker should work with DeKalb County Schools to improve education for the city's residents? Two minutes.
Um, well, I think it's important to understand that, you know, uh, DeKalb County School District is their own agency. They're, they have their own jurisdiction. So we're in more of a supportive role. I meet regularly with our, um, representative for DeKalb County School Board, Allison Gavert. I meet regularly with her to talk about issues in the community. I, without question, our children are our future and we need a really good, uh, education system. And so we, we must do whatever we can to support DeKalb County School District and assist them wherever possible. Um, one of the things I try to do is highlight wherever possible. Uh, you know, we were talking about social media earlier, highlight, um, you know, uh, opportunities for healthy minds, healthy bodies and support our local schools. So as you remember Dan, back in the spring, we did a walk to school where we highlighted, you know, I, uh, Dean Hess came out, took pictures. You guys wrote an article. We did a walk to school to support our local elementary school and get kids out walking. So, you know, anything that I can do to, um, advocate and assist our DeKalb County School Board to improve the quality of education in our community, I'm there. I will step up and I will always, uh, be available to support them in that way.
Thank you. Uh, Karen Berry, the question is to you. What do you think the city of Tuck, how do you think the city of Tucker could work with DeKalb County Schools to improve education for the city's residents? Two minutes.
Um, because it is a DeKalb County and it is separate, I think we would be as a support role, you know, um, we keep our schools within our city and we support DeKalb County, um, Board of Education and their idea, you know, we support them and we back them up and help and help them any way we can. We are just a support to them.
Thank you. Uh, Karen Berry, we will start the next question with you. Do you support inclusionary zoning in Tucker that would require new multifamily product, projects to set aside a percentage of units as affordable housing? Two minutes.
Um, yes, I believe so. Um, I believe that that is something, um, that there, that we're currently discussing and the community is involved. Um, I, it's just a matter of getting it tweaked to where it meets the needs, um. So, uh, to, that it meets the needs, that we don't have, um, we don't want, like, like, um, we're landlocked. We have to be very careful where we put the, how do we build these? How do we build them where they, where they're, where do we put them? Um, and, uh, so, but yes, I'm, I'm absolutely in support of trying to get it, um, to meet the housing needs of everyone if we can. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese, the same question is to you. Uh, do you support inclusionary zoning in Tucker that would require new multifamily projects to set aside a per, a percentage of units as affordable housing? Two minutes.
Yes, I talked about this in the questionnaire. So what I would like to see, I support having mixed housing options whenever we have, um, you know, future mixed development come, um, mixed use development coming into the city of Tucker. And what that would look like is affordable workforce, senior. Um, one of the things that's really important, uh, that folks have talked to me a lot about in our community is having senior housing options and, um, we are maxed out with our senior housing options. We don't have anything else. We also need cottages. Uh, certainly in our housing study, fo- folks were interested in townhouses as well. So I believe that in order to have a strong, again, quality economic development, have, um, a strong quality economic development where it sustains itself for decades to come. You need to have mixed housing and I would support, um, you know, taken to our planning and zoning ways to bake in, uh, percentages to help with that, to fill the need and encourage. And I believe there are developers out there who, who would be really interested in working with us on that. So I will advocate for that in my next term for sure.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Reese, we will start this question with you. What can the city do to better support seniors that are living in Tucker? Two minutes.
Oh, that's a great question. Um, you know, we do, uh, things already to support our seniors. We do at our Parks and Rec, we have programming for seniors, um, on Fridays, I believe. We have, um, every Friday we have a bridge. I think it's a luncheon, but, um, and we have a lot of other activities for them. Um, we do special events for them. I know in, uh, February I went to a seniors Valentine's lunch that was a lot of fun. Um, certainly we could do more, uh, you know, I think, uh, we just got through talking about housing. I mean, we need other opportunities for, um, for senior housing. I also think quality economic development um, is an important element to this where, when we're, you know, building, um, new, um, multifamily type developments or senior housing, that we put those in places where it makes it easy for seniors to walk to their grocery store, walk to the library. Um, you know, where they don't have to get out in the, in their vehicles and drive. Again, it's something that everybody would like to see, but especially for seniors. As we get older, you know, I have an aging mother. She has stopped driving in the last year. Um, because she has some dementia and she, you know, it was just very dangerous for her to give folks an opportunity um, to have places where they can choose not to have a car, I think is another thing that I will certainly work on in my next term.
Thank you. Uh, Karen Berry, same question to you. What can the city of Tucker do to better support seniors living in Tucker?
I, I, in our district, because we are in Smoke Rise, um, I have had numerous seniors talk to me uh, about, uh, finding somewhere, um, maybe even, um, we have, we have an old school and I know there's a lot of issues there. We don't want to buy that school. But maybe offering somewhere where they can get closer. I know it seems crazy to say, well, Tucker Rec is just down the street, but for seniors, that can be quite a bit, that can be a long way. Um, when they don't like to drive, they don't like to drive when it's getting dark. Um, they want somewhere closer that they can either walk to or they're, they're very familiar with, where they can, um, get to, um, where they can socialize, where they can, um, develop their, um, friendships. We have, um, in Smoke Rise, we have, I would say some, uh, seasoned citizens and they do, they don't want to leave their homes and we, um, and I, I would love to find or in research places that are closer or that we could maybe trans, you know, if they need to transition into more of, um, a different kind of housing. Um, and I would love to see the city support that and look for avenues to, to achieve those goals. And I would love to help do that.
Thank you. And that is the last question we have for everyone today. So good job of staying on time. Uh, we're going to move into closing statements and I'm going to give each of you two minutes and we're going to start our closing statements with Karen Berry.
Well, I appreciate you doing this today and I, I am so excited, um, to be in, involved in all of this. Um, I'm excited about, uh, this, uh, support and I appreciate the support of the community and the openness to listen to this new person, like, who are you? And, uh, I, uh, I promised that I would do everything I can to do the best job that I can. Um, and I look forward to working with, um, the council and the mayor in this, uh, city. And, uh, of course, I'd like to be voted, uh, I'd like to, um, be voted in. So tha- thank you for this time.
All right. And, uh, Councilmember Reese, two minutes to make your closing statement.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you to Dan and Decaturish for hosting this event and allowing me an opportunity to share what I've been working on and my vision for the next, my next term in Tucker. We've made a lot of progress. Of course, there's a lot more work to do. My vision for our community is to continue to work to, um, put a community that will, uh, give everyone a chance to thrive, live long, happy lives right here in Tucker from cradle to grandparent, a place where folks have housing options that meets the needs of their budget and where they are in their lives. And continue to work to improve the quality of life for everyone in Tucker. Um, I'd like to work to improve Lawrenceville Highway, the Lawrenceville Highway Hugh How corridor in my next term. I'd like to work on getting a bus rapid transit, uh, center near Mountain Industrial and Seventy-Eight in my next term. I will continue to work on beautification, adding amenities while repairing and building our trails and sidewalks. I will work on fostering an environment where we can increase, uh, housing at all ec- economic levels that offers everyone an opportunity to have, uh, be close to green space with pocket parks, expand green space shopping and restaurants. It's been an absolute honor to serve out my friend Bill Rosenfeld's term. Want to take a moment and remember him. Um, but, uh, I hope that you'll visit my website. Um, but I hope that you'll visit my website, virginiree.com, V I R G I N I A. R E C E dot com. I'd love to hear from you. Love to hear your ideas. You can sign up for a newsletter. You can request a sign. You can uh request uh an opportunity to have a meet and greet with me. Um, but uh, yeah, check in with me and uh ask for your vote. Don't forget, early voting begins October sixteenth. And election day is November seven. And um I just ask for your vote and tell all your friends. Thank you.
You stole my line. I I was gonna, I was gonna remind people that uh election is November seventh and early voting is October sixteenth. So thank you for that. This was uh the Decatur's Forum for Tucker City Council District District One, Post Two. Please mark your calendars for election day. Please vote in your local elections, y'all. Local government is the most impactful. Relevant government that we have and I and I think people forget that. Um, but it's important that we stay involved and stay engaged. And more importantly, it's good people, a good that we have people who are willing to step up. And be a part of that government. So I thank you both for your interest in public service. Uh, and for putting yourselves out there and uh, because I know it's an imposition on your time and I know you have to sit and. Answer annoying questions sometimes and deal with criticism and scrutiny, but please know that that our publication sees everyone uh who does this and it is appreciated. Um, if you appreciate us and the opportunities that we provide our readers to learn about these candidates. I would humbly ask that you go to support yourlocalnews.com or support mylocalnews.com. Or even support ourlocalnews.com. I've bought all the URLs uh. To uh support our fall fundraiser. Uh, these elections do cost money. Free news is not cheap. Uh, we're still trying to cover the communities that we cover on a regular basis while adding to our workload with election coverage. So uh please, if you appreciate that, contribute to our fall fundraiser. You can find more information about that at supportyourlocalnews.com. Uh, I appreciate everyone watching. We'll upload this to YouTube and Facebook soon. And I hope everyone has a great weekend. We will resume our forums next week with the city of Clarkston. You won't want to miss that one. Uh, it'll, it'll be a hoot. So uh, we'll see you next week. Bye bye, everyone.
Bye, thank you.
Thank y'all.